You know, low tide looked about like half, half a tide normally does, which means when the high tide comes back in tonight, it's going to be high. Yeah, so here's Brett Jett saying 10:15, 10:30, and usually the the canal is about an hour behind Canary Creek will be maybe a little later than that. So, so just keep that in mind for anybody that's worried about things. You know, we, there may be flooding on Cedar Street, you know, Savannah Road tomorrow. I don't know.
Charlie just asked if, if you email him with your flood observations tomorrow and he'll get around best he can, but he would appreciate the data.
I'd like to get started, but I want to wait one more minute or so. Hopefully Melanie will join us. Good evening, Bob.
I actually had to reboot my machine because I had no sound. Nancy, thank you for, for your reply. We'll figure out a time.
Great.
So we have six other participants besides us so far.
While we're waiting, I took part in a webinar this afternoon that the Delaware Coastal, Delaware Coastal Programs Group did out of the Dover office on green shorelines for homes and green shorelines for coastlines, I think it was called. It was a program. There were a couple of presenters from the Northwest. But there was a really, really nice package of BMPs that were suggested. They had this whole rating system set up. I think it might serve as a potential model for some of the things that we've been sort of kicking around with the sea level rise, guys. I think there's also some possibilities for overlap with the wetland buffers and other things that we're doing in, in, in the area tonight. Just wanted to throw it out there. I'll put some things together and send it to everybody.
Yes, if you could forward that, that would be great. Thank you for doing that. Excellent.
Well, by my watch, it is 5:03, so I'm going to get started. I'm not sure if Melanie has a problem or not, but we'll come back to that. This is the special meeting, public meeting of the Lewis Planning Commission on Wednesday, December 16. The purpose of this is to present, discuss, receive comments on proposed ordinance to amend Article 9 of Chapter 197 zoning of the municipal code of the city of Lewis, Section 197-73 relating to floodplain regulations. I want to say that while we are not required to have such a public meeting, it is in keeping with the policy of the Planning Commission to enhance our transparency and to benefit from the input from the public at every opportunity. So I welcome comments from the public. And we're looking forward to having a good discussion amongst the commission. Following this meeting, we will immediately move into our regular meeting. There will be no delay. So we will proceed apace to get the business behind us tonight. Janelle, as of November 30th, were there any comments received?
There were no comments received.
Any since then?
No comments have been received.
Is there anybody who's participating tonight would like to make some comments about the proposed ordinance? Please raise your hand or use a chat explanation to get hold of Janelle so she can recognize you.
Do you like me to give like a brief overview of the proposed changes and, and the history that the subcommittee went through for this evening's public meeting?
I think we'll save that until we go to the actual consideration of it because there's some questions that I think need to be answered. Right now, we're just trying to see if there's any public comments.
I don't really have very many people on.
I think there's six more than us, or there was. There are seven more than us.
Yeah, Anne Marie, Brett, Charlie, Robin, Casperson Rissert.
Okay, is there objection to my moving to the regular meeting since we've received no comments as of the deadline and no one has apparently come tonight prepared to make some comments? Glenn, do you see any reason why we can't close this public meeting that is not required, but we offered to solicit comments?
Not at all. You can proceed.
Without objection, then I'm simply going to close the public meeting and move to the regular meeting on December 16. This is the regular monthly meeting of the Lewis Planning Commission. I first want to thank the Sea Level Rise Subcommittee and our Chair, Tom Panetta, for the outstanding Water Workshop III. I think the Subcommittee did themselves well and did us well by bringing together those experts in the two and a half hour or so presentation that's still available on YouTube if you haven't had a chance to see it all or you want to catch up on it. I've, I've gotten lots of good comments back on it. It continues our trend in the first two water workshops and now the third of bringing experts in to help us. And there will be some continuing benefits that will flow from that. In addition, we're going to follow up on the water workshop by soliciting input from the panelists and from those who attended it. I think there were 43, Janelle, if I remember correctly.
Correct.
We're going to try and reach out to them to get their input on what they, what they saw, what they liked, what they would like more of, what they want us to address in the future. Since those are folks that went out of their way to be involved and participate, we want to try and take advantage of that. And Anne Marie is going to orchestrate a survey of both the panelists and then separately of the persons who participated to get some feedback and help set some direction going forward. So I'm, I'm very, Tom and company, I'm very pleased that it came off as well as it did. I know we've gotten some feedback from the panelists themselves that they were very much appreciative of the way it was presented and how well it worked. So thank you all very much for your contributions and we appreciate the extra effort that that took to bring it on. Are there any other announcements or matters that any commissioner would like to bring up? Hearing none, I'm going to move then to Item B2, which is the consideration and discussion, possible action on an ordinance to amend Article 9 of Chapter 197 zoning of the municipal code of the city of Lewis, Section 197-73 relating to floodplain regulations. I wish Melanie were able to be with us. But we need to proceed to consider this. Joe and Melanie really worked hard to bring us this draft. I will say at the outset, and Glenn, you can correct me if I misspeak, that because of the FEMA regulations, insurance regulations before adoption by the Marin City Council, this matter will be referred to FEMA or their review and advice before final action by the city. This is going to be the procedure we're going to follow. There is no real timeframe for that, but Anne Marie and I have been discussing what we think is the most effective way to take matters that relate to floodplain. Once this commission has acted on them and in a position to recommend them to the Marin City Council, we'll at that point send it to FEMA, defer consideration by Marin City Council until we get feedback from FEMA. If we're lucky, that'll happen in our lifetime. But we want to move ahead. We hope that FEMA will be able to not only look at this ordinance, there will be others, I'm sure, from Sea Level Rise and perhaps other groups. But when they look at this first one, hopefully they'll be able to give us some comments that might be useful in our other matters that we're considering relating to flooding and other issues. In addition, Anne Marie has also established a relationship with DENREC where they're willing to take a more formal look at our proposed amendment to the code and give us their independent feedback. So two expert groups, one required because of the insurance regulations and the other, and on a volunteer basis, has agreed to help look at these amendments and see what we're trying to accomplish and if we can do it better, or if there are things they would suggest that would strengthen the proposal. So in the process, we have, which I did not know, we have a Mr. Flood in the city government who I did not know. And our building official happens to be Mr. Flood, who's our connection to FEMA and otherwise. And we will then send our proposed amendment, if in fact this commission agrees to it tonight, to him, who will then move it along through FEMA. At the same time, the Subcommittee Chair and Janelle will be involved in any feedback from FEMA or any dialogue that occurs prior to returning it to the city, which then would of necessity, bring it back to us if there's substantial changes or bring it on to Marin City Council for their consideration of potential final action. Are there any questions about that new process that we are going to be dealing with? Okay, hearing none, let's move on to the language of the amendment. We've had this before us a couple of times. I have a couple of questions, but I want to defer to everybody else first. So are there other questions from members of the commission? Don't be shy, folks. Now's the time to raise questions.
What's the, what's the version or the date on the ordinance?
It is the one that was attached to the
Agenda.
November 20.
Meeting agenda, and I don't see a date on it.
It says November 20.
November 30.
Correct. I'm out of date.
All right, well, Joe, I guess I'm going to have to ask you and, and Janelle and Glenn probably the question, the questions that I have and see if anybody else has any, it may spur some thinking. Under administration, Paragraph C4A, there is a deletion of the containing at least 50 lots or at least five acres, whichever is lesser. What is the, what is the thought behind the impact of expanding coverage beyond that threshold?
So the concern was that they wanted to impact every lot, any new subdivision, not just the ones that are 50 or more or five acres or less than five acres. Excuse me, sorry about that. They wanted to make sure that this regulations would apply to any subdivision development within the floodplain regulations, in the floodplain, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I understood the intent. I just wanted to make sure that everybody was aware that we were taking a substantial change to this, which I certainly agree with, but I wanted to make sure that that was known or focused on. Any comments or questions to anybody?
Yeah, Janelle, this, this is for major and minor subdivisions, correct? Really minor.
Well, it would impact any subdivision because based on this, it, it just is for subdivisions. And again, it gets, it gets rid of the lot, numbers of lots and the acreage.
Right, okay.
All right, on the next page, which is Page 3 by my count, which is Paragraph D3, no, excuse me, D2C. The choice of designated versus provided. It seems to me that while we have tightened up the requirements generally, I'm not sure that designated is a step forward, rather a step back as opposed to provided. Glenn, do you have any thoughts about the impact of designated versus provided?
I tend to agree with you that provided, you know, it sounds more of a requirement than designated. You know, they might not have a great distinction, but I, but I do think that like provided better than designated.
Joe, is there some reason why we changed that to designated?
My memory fails me, but it's probably something Melanie put in there. I don't know. Janelle, does that ring a bell?
I'm, I don't recall why you wanted it designed instead of provided. You just did.
Why wouldn't you do it?
Designed, I'm sorry, it is designed.
Designed.
Not designated, my mistake.
But Drew, I think the issue is still the same. Something, someone can say, claim that something is designed to do something. But if it actually doesn't work and isn't implemented.
Why not in subsection C say, "All subdivision and development proposals shall include adequate drainage to reduce exposure to flood damage."
So we take out have and designed and provided, and we'll say include.
Right.
So I'm just going to bring Robin into this conversation since he can provide some expertise in the area.
Right.
Just in case I can't answer the question, he can. So he should be coming on just momentarily.
I don't have a problem with the word design because I mean, design implies it's to an engineering. I mean, just like we say that.
Ross, you're done.
Rose up.
Rose, Tom.
I think some other concern was making sure that since it has to be, they wanted it engineered, there's an actual design standard that goes into it instead of just provided and what qualifications it is as provided.
Robin, you're muted, but you have a comment, please?
And for those following us online, we, on, in the, for everybody else, we are on line 96.
No, no, I don't have any comment on that. I, I don't know if the reasoning why was to ensure that we start at the beginning that it's designed that way. Again, I, I mean, it could be put both. I mean, instead of you could put and, and provided.
Yeah, I, I really don't have an issue with it as it's, as it's proposed with the word designed. I, I think designed implies that there's some greater effort that goes into it, you know.
Just as a point of consistency, three, under Protection of Water Supply and Sanitary Sewage Systems also uses the word designed.
Yes.
Right.
So is it, is it the sense of the commission that design is, is sufficient? Or Glenn's suggestion to make it include adequate drainage to reduce exposure to flood damage? What's the pleasure of the commission?
I actually think designed is better for what, for what it's worth.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm, I'm okay with designed.
Sounds good.
Speaking as an engineer, Sumner.
So not as an engineer, but just as someone who expects that as this rolls out, we will rely on engineers. I think I've raised this point before. How do we resolve my design, my engineer declaring the design that we think will work versus yeah, how do we figure out whether or not it's actually going to work as designed?
So there are standards and requirements from the Sussex Conservation District, from FEMA, other sections of the code that have to be met. And then again, as we've discussed in the past, if you get two different, differing, you know, opinions, you can decide who you want to go with because of course, city engineer is going to review this and make sure that it's complying with the code as well. And if they see any concerns, they're going to call them out. And then typically when we have those, those items, typically the agencies, the city, the applicant will get together and discuss and come up with the best solution to address the concerns.
Yeah, I'm not sure if Charlie's on or not, but I think the point was very well made is Sussex County Conservation District implements DENREC's regulations, which requires you to design your stormwater system for one, 10, 100 year events on various levels. Your, your conveyance of water through your stormwater system has design requirements relative to capacity and velocity. So there are, I mean, there, there isn't a, so to speak, single design, but there are engineering practices that back this up.
Can I just ask, who's the ultimate judge when this is being, of this, when this is being reviewed? I mean, it.
So our city engineer, GMD.
Oh, it's both Robin and the city engineer.
That also true for variances?
Variances would go through the Board of Adjustment.
Right.
Okay. Are there other fees or costs impacts or anything like that associated with this?
Not that I can think of off the top of my head. Robin, do you, can you think of any?
Like a application fee or anything like that?
Well, the Board of Adjustment fee is $1,250. So anything you go to Board of Adjustment has an application fee.
But as part of
If you wanted a variance, you would have.
Correct.
Okay, but other than that, there you wouldn't, you're not, okay. Other than that, it's just the application. You do the work. Good, all right. Okay.
Correct.
But I'm not sure that Glenn Kirkman will, I don't know that this is something that would ever go to the Board of Adjustments. The Board of Adjustment variances are for zoning. I mean, the Board of Adjustment doesn't have the ability to waive design requirements. They can give you a variance from the IRC code or other things.
So this section of code is the zoning code and there is a section under this. Where is it? Beginning on line 111 that has criteria for variances before the Board of Adjustment for variances from properties within the floodplain. And there are proposed changes being proposed to that section of code as well. A couple of changes, a couple of deletions, and then it's just some renum lettering of some of those items. So the Board of Adjustment does have the ability to provide relief based on there's at least 11 or 12 additional criteria for a variance that's already currently in code. What's being proposed is some changes. So they do have that.
But I, I'm confused. The Board of Adjustments, I mean, for example, for flood, flooding, there are things in there like freeboard. The Board of Adjustments can't waive freeboard, can they?
If it's in the, if it's in the
I'm sorry, go ahead.
I believe they can if there's, if they meet the criteria within the code sections regarding a normal Board of Adjustment application and the additional requirements in the code because if the freeboard is a requirement of the zoning code, that is something that can be considered by the Board of Adjustment because it's an area variance.
That's right, but, but Tom, you should be aware that I think part of Robin's reporting criteria annually is how many variances the city granted that relate to the floodplain. They had a problem, an issue in Bowers Beach where they were granting a lot of variances from freeboard requirements and, and their flood insurance rating was put in jeopardy because of, so we'd be reluctant to grant many of those and we haven't, I, I can't remember ever having a request for one in Lewis. But it is, it is an issue to be aware.
And if the freeboard is not in the zoning code and in the IRC, of course, then they would not have jurisdiction.
Right.
Charlie also said SCD issues the permit form review based on DENREC regulations and there are fees associated with SCD review. Finally, SCD performs construction and ongoing maintenance inspections.
And those are typically standard as part of any development that goes through requires the Conservation District review. There are fees and inspections that are required for those types of developments.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Um, did Janelle and Glenn address your question sufficiently?
That was to Tom.
Oh, I'm sorry. I think you said Sumner. No, I yes, I, I understand. So it can go to Board of Variants, but we would not be, we, we should not expect the Board of, Board of Adjustment to regularly give variances on these types of items.
I think that's right, Tom. I think that's why there's just this additional criteria above and beyond the Board of Adjustment typical standard that applies. Because, you know, there's, there's an expectation that a variance from a floodplain regulation is not something that's easy to achieve.
Okay, that, that, that answers it.
Well, in fact, there is a, I have a question on the limitation of variances that appears in Paragraph 3A4. My reading of that is it's incomplete. End of that was struck in the proposal, but I don't understand what the determination is in the paragraph as now without the, without the ending of it. Joe, can you help me or Janelle, can you help me on that?
I think there's supposed to be a period there. I think they just wanted to strike the, the rest of that sentence.
That's what I'm saying is it seems to me it's incomplete. Based upon a determination that granting a variance for development within a floodplain or special flutter with base flood, but no floodway. Is that a sufficient thought?
It appears that it's not.
Yes. And I'm not sure what the intent was, Joe.
I, I don't have the current, I, I printed out the wrong copy. I'm dealing with September here. I don't have November's issue.
Janelle, can you shed any light on that?
I honestly don't recall at the time and just trying to think. Sorry, I'm just reading and trying to think of the reason they struck that.
Glenn, do you have any insight or thought?
No, other than it's almost a meaningless provision without the last phrase.
Correct.
There's got to be some condition that's met.
Yeah.
Yes.
Do you want to leave that? So just for everybody who's listening online, we are on line 130 and 131. Do you want to leave, put that second, the rest of that sentence back in? Which is will not result in increased flood heights beyond that which is allowed in these regulations.
Unless, and I don't know, I was not in the meetings, unless the intent was to only strike the last part of it and was the intent to say will not result in increased flood heights beyond existing or beyond current. I, I'm not sure what the intent was on the striking. Was it to make it more restrictive or?
Yeah, the intent for the, and all of the changes was to make everything more restrictive.
Then maybe what was meant to be struck was just the, the last part of that clause.
You mean, will not result in increased flood heights period or?
Will not result in increased flood heights beyond the current. I mean, you, you have to have some
Yeah, exactly.
So I, I'm making that up, by the way. I have no, no insight.
Is there any concern with leaving it the way it was originally in the code and not striking the rest of it? Or do you have some concerns and want to make it more restrictive? And I think that's definitely something that can be discussed. You know, if, if you think it's fine where it is or as it was originally, as it's currently in the code, we can leave it that way. Or if you'd like to make it more restrictive, that's something we can definitely discuss.
Well, the way it's written, if we just leave it the way it was, it's reflexive and it just says that as per the regulations that, so that's what cited above. And I think we already, I think the regulation already contains those restrictions. So I'm okay leaving it the way it is. Or was.
I, I would do that. I mean, you're going to have an opportunity for Melanie to weigh in and, you know, it's going to be subject to a public hearing again at city council level. So there's an opportunity for an explanation to be given if there is an explanation, but I think I put it back to what it was originally.
We will take care of that.
Well, let's, we'll have to have a motion on that in just a second because
Just taking notes.
Are there any other changes or questions that we have before we look to amend this?
Yeah, I have one question. I'm sorry, I missed in the beginning. On line 57, we changed minimize to prevent. Prevent is a very definitive word. And as an engineer, an impossible standard to me. an impossible standard to me. I don't know why we have minimize everywhere else in the section and we went to prevent there.
I had brought that up because the way I was reading minimize, it's like, okay, some is, some is okay. You can, you can do damage. You could do some flooding, you know, to a certain extent. I just wanted to prevent that from happening, not to basically allow some of it to happen. I wanted to prevent it and not see it happen at all.
Yeah, and I kind of read it as, I mean, obviously, if you subdivide something and you damage the water supply, we don't want that to happen or sewage disposal facilities, like actual structure for things, streets and bridges. That might be a bit more tricky because, well, I don't know.
Well, then why do we have minimize the need for rescue and relief efforts? Why isn't that prevent?
What line?
That's on 63.
That's out.
Minimize the need for rescue and relief efforts.
That's something I pictured not being preventable. I mean, that's something that depends on the size of the storm and the readiness of the city. You know, it's going to be needed and
Well, I mean, if we have a 50 inch rainstorm, like we've had, we've seen other places. You're not going to prevent flooding of the stormwater and sanitary systems either.
Again, it seems to me it would, it would help if Melanie were here to answer for the reasoning here. I have to say, looking down that list a little further, I'm trying to make a sense of which ones matter more, you know, where prevent is used versus minimize. And I think, given the logic that seems to have replaced minimize with prevent in A to C, I would say that A to J should also be prevent instead of minimize. I mean, isn't that, wasn't that the whole point to prevent the impact of development on adjacent properties within a near floodplain grown areas?
Well, Glenn, what's your feeling from a legal perspective from a defensibility using a term as strong as prevent?
So I'm a little bit absent from this discussion on this one because there's a line of cases that say a statement of purpose and ordinance is never something that's going to be sufficient to rely upon for any legal conclusion as to so, so prevent versus minimize in this, in this specific subject of this overall ordinance doesn't make a big difference to me one way or the other. So it's more about what message do you want to send just as a statement of purpose, but, but I don't think any judge is going to or is going to hang its hat on anything that's found in A2.
Then in that, if that's the case, then, I mean, I think we should have prevent under subsection F and subsection J.
I agree with that. If they're goals, objectives, rather than the cold hard criteria, I absolutely agree with that.
All right.
I agree as well.
On this section?
The only thing I wanted to point out is at line, line 58, I think the word street should be streets with an S.
Yeah.
Okay, I think we can make that change without having a motion to amend. I think that change is simply a matter of consistency from our solicitor, which is appropriate. All right, let's go back then to the formal process. Do I have a motion, Mr. Panetta, on paragraph A2 on changing some of the wording?
Correct. I would suggest that we substitute the word minimize in line 63 and line 70 with prevent instead.
So paragraph F would read prevent the need, paragraph J would, would prevent the impact. Is there a second?
A second.
Is there further discussion? By showing of hands, red, does it make your vote in favor? I?
I get two votes.
Is there, is there anyone opposed to it raising their hand? It passes unanimously. Then moving on to paragraph G3A, is there a motion to change the ending of that paragraph four?
I'll make that motion to reinclude the struck and test.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Joe seconds it. Any further discussions?
Just as long as Melanie has a chance to weigh in on it at some point, like, like Glenn suggested, I think that's
Yeah, I tried to call Tom a minute ago and I got a voicemail. So I'm sorry, I don't know what happened. All right, all in favor of the proposed change, raise your hand. Anyone opposed, raise their hand. Joey can't vote both ways. All right, it passes unanimously. Then do I have a motion to adopt the recommended amended language of the floodplain proposed ordinance, which we then would forward to FEMA and to Denrec for their comments prior to formal consideration by the Marin City Council. Do I have such a motion?
Don't move.
Don't move it. Bob, is that a second? Bob, was that a second? Okay. Any further discussion? All in favor, again, signify by raising your hand. Those opposed? Passes unanimously. All right, thank you very much. Let's go back then to agenda item B1, which is discussion and possible action regarding a revised site plan for Dutchman's Harvest located on Savannah Road, Sussex County Tax Map 335-8.00-36.07 and 36.03. The owner is BB Medical Center slash OA-Vantage Point 2 LLC. As you'll recall, we considered this matter last month, made a recommendation to approve this pending any additional comments that were received by the end of the month. Janelle, what's the status of comments at this time?
There were no comments submitted.
And we have had none since.
Correct.
So tonight, Glenn, I don't know what the form of it is, but we're simply reaffirming our recommendation of approval forwarding it to the Marin City Council.
Yep, just a motion to ratify your oral decision, your forward decision.
I have such a motion. Don nearby has made such a motion. Is there a second?
A second.
A second. Tom, there's seconds it. Is there discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, again, please signify by raising your hand. It's unanimous. Any opposed? All right. Thank you for that. Now, we have items C1 under new business, presentation, discussion, possible action on the action plan. Unfortunately, the action plan amendments and the text were not included as an attachment, but you should have received them today in a separate email. I'm going to ask
They were also posted on the website.
Today?
No. They were posted on the eighth.
Okay, but they weren't attached to the agenda though.
Correct, but they were posted on the Action Plan Subcommittee website.
Okay, I'm going to ask Kay to take us through, apparently there are only a couple of changes that occurred from the last time we were considering this matter. And then this is open for discussion. Again, our proposal has been to complete our action plan prioritization of issues, which we then will forward to Marin City Council. Marin City Council will then review it and give us feedback, which will set our priorities for the foreseeable future. Kay, would you like to take us through the changes?
Certainly. We collected comments for several weeks and Janelle, as I remember, we have two.
Correct.
And they, they appear at the top of page three. Landscape to include environmental benefits and open space require meaningful, usable, communal, recreational, open space. And after discussion, we ranked them, ranked those two as medium importance and included them. And the rest of the chart remains as it was last month. Janelle's done a great job of wrestling all of these ideas into a consistent shape. And I think we're all pretty much in agreement about, from the subcommittee, about where we are. So I'm wondering if anyone tonight has any other comments about this chart.
A question for Janelle or Kay. Don't we buy code require only 10% of a development to be open space? Is that the number?
Correct, unless it's a cluster development, then that changes.
Yeah, because, you know, you say require meaningful, usable open space, but if it's only 10% of the growth, I mean, it's, it's sort of, you know, kind of hard to do.
It's also an action plan for us to review that subject matter to make sure that we want to be consistent with 10% in the future.
Yeah.
Well, I think, I think one of the issues here is that currently open space includes stormwater retention. So as we've seen in some developments that have come in, the entire open space is consumed by nonusable space.
Yes, I think it's asking a development and a designer to go beyond and do something for the residents or someone who's walking past and goes through a development so that there is open space, not just open space by calculation or name. And I think this is something that we have noted a couple of times in the last couple of years. So I think it goes along with all of the core values. And I think it's our intent. I think we've seen that our intent can be subverted by our current language.
Hey, Kay.
Yes.
This is Bonnie. I just had a question because I couldn't quite crack the code on this. There were, there's three three subject matter areas, stormwater management, floodplain and sea level rise, that all are collectively ranked hi. And then there's others that are high slash medium. What I couldn't, and I'm not, I'm not in any way suggesting I disagree with with the high ranking or the medium high ranking or whatever it may be, but I couldn't quite figure out how the subparts, which include a smattering of mediums and highs and medium lows, how those added up to a high in one case or a high medium in another case. I just couldn't. How was that arrived at?
Mostly because everything can't be red hot and get it done. So in addition to that ranking, we're sort of, we're looking also at the difficulty column, because if, say, a subcommittee has a certain amount of time before, say, before your materials are going to come back from FEMA and you know, you're going to need to spend some time going over those. If there is something on this chart, once it's approved, that you will have time to make a significant impact with, you can choose it and get that work done and moving forward through the process. So that was, that was our intent was that if we put everything high here, everyone would just kind of give up, but
So in, in terms of going forward with this, is the idea to start with the categories that collectively have the high ranking and do the high things in the subset and then the medium high and then the medium and then the medium low? I mean, is
Kind of, and plus we're already doing, we're already working actively on those three. And other people may have other opinions about high and low and medium.
Yeah, I just, yeah, if you're, I just didn't know if you're assigning those rankings, I just didn't know if that would then mean that the commission would go through those in order of their assigned rank.
My guess was more the difficulty column in practicality. Because if you only have enough time to have a couple of meetings, you might choose something in the easy column because that's all the time you have. But, and maybe there are just a couple of you, but if you could have a larger subcommittee, you might be assigned something in the high and difficult section. And I mean, these are certainly up for discussion, but I mean, nothing's included on here that's not important, put it that way. And if you ask me, it's a pretty daunting list. This is a lot.
Bonnie, I think in general, your, your question is on point. It is intended to get the blessing of Marin City Council that these are our priorities. And then we have to try and translate that into a workable group of issues that we can tackle. Obviously, there's too much on here to be done in a year or whatever, even by a nine or whatever member commission we have. But it is intended to rank in priority, both by the difficulty and otherwise, those things that we think need to be looked at in the city and then go forward. So it is intended to be a ranking. It is intended to be an expression of the commission's determination of what's important, more important, whatever, and that we should tackle first.
I think it also recognizes, well, these are all ranked high. You know, based on resources, you might not be able to get to all of the high items at the, at the same time, that maybe you can get in one high item, a couple of medium and maybe a lower two and work on those all at the same time. So you kind of recognize like, well, this one's going to be difficult. You know, it might be a medium rank, but difficult. So it's like, maybe we can do some things a little bit lower on the, on the priority list, but we know it's going to be easier to get done. So I think there's a lot of different ways to be looking at this because sometimes that, that lower hanging fruit might actually be able to get done faster while some of the, the longer, the higher priorities are going to take more time. So that way we can continue to work on multiple items on the list at the same time and not lose fact, sight of the fact that there's a lot of items on the list and we want to make sure we're working on all of them as well.
Right. I just, I was just, if, if, when this, I mean, I know someone from planning commission will present it, but when this comes to council, I just, it seems to me that what you're asking for is for council to say, these are all important things. We're not going to tell you what order to do them in. And, and I think that's appropriate because you all need to, I mean, we may give some guidance about, you know, stormwater management is obviously important, more important than, I don't know, studies. I just picked that out arbitrarily because it's lower down. But I think it's up to this commission to decide how it wants to attack what is in fact a daunting list and in what order. So I don't, I just want to make sure that when it comes to council, people don't get confused about saying to the county, to the, to the commission, rather, well, I think that you should take this and make it high and, you know, blah, blah, blah. I think you're asking for a much more holistic response from council.
So, you know, one of the things that Bonnie, I think Bonnie has a very good point there from what's what I hadn't thought of when I was looking at this before is what we never show on this list is a benefit column. You know, what's the benefit of doing the item? Because, I mean, in the engineering world, we do something called probabilistic risk assessment, which is, you know, what's the consequence of the action and then what's the risks and so on? And that's how you determine its ranking for failure. And what you don't have here is, you know, why should I, why should I work on BPW stormwater infrastructure, which is high, high? You know, what's the benefit? You know, for that or what's the risk to the city of that item? And I think that might help city council better understand the logic behind it.
I was just going to say, I think, you know, typically that it's easier to state benefits when you actually have the action defined. And so since these are areas that we would work on, some of which need information and input to even begin the work. I understand what you're saying, Tom, but I think for some of them, it might be quite difficult and I have to go down the list to identify which ones would be. But the, the other thing I wanted to say was that when we, when we did the ranking of these at the high level, I don't want Bonnie, you to think that it was like summing something up from the items that led to that ranking was really looking more holistically at that as an area. Because, and you obviously can't do them in the order Because, and you obviously can't do them in the order in which they're ranked, because, you know, if you look at the column for consultant, sometimes things are going to be needed for a consultant. And, you know, we don't know at this point which, how those would be used, so.
Which I think is another reason why we have the ranking in the consultant row is so you can see our, okay, we believe this be a high priority or a high ranking and it would require a consultant. It's just a way of putting, being as transparent as we can about our future goals, I believe was the main intent of this whole action plan to begin with.
Hey, were you trying to add something?
Well, I was also going to say, you know, the consultant part is our acknowledgement that some of these will involve a cost and just by necessity more time. And I think the, the need to think about the best way to use a consultant rather than just on one of these line items, can we group them? Even if we haven't done, even if we're not in the same completion spot on them all, but make use of a consultant if there's a fee, get the most possible from that person at one time. And tonight's discussion also make, is making me think that the consultant's loop on some of these is going to mean FEMA and DENREC, that circle, which I hadn't considered. So that may be something that, I don't know if we need to add that or not, but it's going to, I think, become the natural part of our procedure, it sounds like, now that we're getting into these technical topics.
And Bonnie, there's one more aspect to this ranking that is right up your sweet spot. As we look at, if the Marin City Council blessed this analysis and come back to us and say, you know, we generally agree with this approach, we appreciate your ranking, et cetera, we still have to come back on the point that's just been raised about the budgetary impact on the consultants to determine, you know, what we can ask for, what's reasonable, where we can best spend them. And that process has to take place sometime in January or February to get into the cycle of the budgeting for the city. So we do have a secondary bite at the apple, if you will, if Marin City Council are in general agreement with us, because we'll come back with specific recommendations or consultants to address one or more of these issues, which you all ultimately have to decide at the Marin City Council level, whether you'll fund them or not.
Right, no, I agree. You know, and that's, as, as the city manager always says, a budget can be amended. So it'd be great if we can roll as possible into the first budget exercise. But, you know, if, if you get down the road and you realize you didn't net need this consultant, but you need that consultant or you need two instead of one, that can be dealt with. Can I raise just one thing? And I think I mentioned this before, and maybe this is a Glenn question. On page two, it says, "Review Board of Adjustment Appeal Process." I'm not sure what that means, but does the planning commission have the authority to review another commission's processes? I don't, I seem to think this came up.
Oh, actually, actually, I can answer that, because if you see in the next column, the, the people who do it would be the Board of Adjustment members and city staff. It wouldn't be planning commission.
But I don't, I don't, I don't think you can put a priority on a different commission. I mean, this, this is a list of planning commission priorities, so I don't quite understand why or how. You can, well, you can certainly say to them, you know, you might want to look at your appeal process, but I'm not quite sure it's something that, you know, you can formalize.
Right, a lot of these items that came out as priorities will not actually fall under the purview of the planning commission. They will fall under different organizations. It's just, these came out as, hey, these are ideas that, and concepts that we believe need to be looked at. We want to be looked at, that's why I kind of put a category of who's responsible, because we recognize that of almost the 90 items on the list, about 30 plus will fall off the responsibility list for the planning commission.
Right, I don't, I guess my point here is this is the wrong place for these.
Good, I think your question, I think councilperson Oslers' question is, if, if this is the group of planning experts, what planning angle is there to a review of the board? It would be like the planning commission saying, the Board of Ethics should review its process. Well, you know, you all are the planning experts, not the ethics experts. So how, how do you make a determination that the ethics committee needs to review its process? Just like, how do you make a determination the Board of Adjustment needs to make its, to review its process from a planning perspective? Is that what you're trying to get at, councilperson?
Well, I just think it's not, I, I think you're mixing apples and oranges. What, at, at best, what I would suggest be done with this list is, my understanding is you're coming as the planning commission saying, these are, these are the priorities of the planning commission. And your priorities can't be what somebody else does. I mean, that's, that's not your prerogative. So if you wanted to bifurcate these lists and say, the planning commission also has concerns about the following, that's fine, but I, I don't see how you can admix things that are within your purview and things that aren't.
I think the purpose wants to capture all the open items that we've been living with over the last number of years.
Okay, well, maybe, and these may be things that you care about, but it, you can't, you can't put in your list of priorities, something that somebody else has an issue with. It's just not...
I understand, but it was really a matter of collecting open items.
I think John also has something to say. John?
I believe this topic came up, and maybe I misunderstood or somebody else misunderstood, but this topic came up, and I think Kay, maybe you raised it and you said, how can we tell another committee or commission that this is some, a priority they should work on? And now, we pulled all these, I don't know where that line came from. I don't know who put it in there. We all kind of went through different resources that we were assigned and we plucked and pulled things from that resource. Is that how that line got in there? But I do know that we had discussed that in the subcommittee meeting. And I think I remember saying, like, if we're asked to do this and we're asked to look through these sources and say, this is what we think is a priority. And I think Kay raised a question of, we shouldn't be doing this. But I said, if our directive is to look through the comprehensive plan and look through this and find the recommendations, that's why something like that is in there, not because we want to tell another committee how to act. Actually, we're pretty uncomfortable with that. We were doing our best to do what I think we were being told to do. So I don't want you to think that we're trying to tell other committees how to act or respond. We're simply trying to do what we were asked to do.
Yeah, and maybe the problem...
Just for clarity's sake is all.
In what this is called.
That's kind of the way.
Yeah, I, I think, Bonnie, I think this could be resolved simply by, by not listing those as, as priorities that go to other committees. But I think part of the value of this is that it identifies actions around, we've identified the priorities in terms of area. And then they've gathered together every action or item that seems to have come up under that. And we're clarifying who's responsible. So in the column for responsibility, you know, we're assuming, or we, we believe it's, you know, someone else who's responsible for some of these and for others that, that we are. And in others, yet, we say unknown. So we're seeing actions that people are bringing up, whether it's in public meetings or whatever, that we don't think are the responsibility of the LPC, but it's not clear whose responsibility they are, but they seem to be reasonable actions. And we're letting city council and the mayor know about that.
Well, that, that's fine, but I, the way this is written, it makes it look like you're basically assigning work. And the fact that something may have come up at an LPC meeting that is of interest to LPC, you know, that's great, but I, I don't think it becomes a priority of LPC. All I'm suggesting is that maybe you, this needs to be rejigged to, 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 you don't want to, maybe not lose what you got there, but say, under other items of interest, the planning commission has noted through the years that, you know, there are issues outside its competence that are, that, that may, that perhaps those who are responsible should look into it, those items are blah, 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 and do it that way.
Yeah, I don't think they tend to ever assign something to, to another committee. But I just wanted to say one other thing, and that is, for a lot of the items that, that we're looking at here or the issues like stormwater management or floodplain, individual silos working alone probably won't have the impact that some coordinated actions or priorities across groups could have. And so I think there's still is some value for us to highlight things that would be helpful to come from other groups, not directing them, not, you know, assigning them.
I don't, I don't disagree with that, but if it is the planning commission saying, hey, some other commission, you guys should go do this, I don't, I don't think that's going to be very well received. And it's, it's going to work against the cooperation that you're talking about.
Bonnie, the process, I think, is slightly different than what we've been talking about. The process is, the planning commission took a broad brush at what we thought were outstanding questions or issues over time, related to prior actions, the planning commission, related to the comp plan, et cetera. We were sending it to Marin City Council for your blessing. And if you agree with the actions that are listed enumerated there, you may or may not assign some of them to other bodies within the city. But that's not something we're proposing, we take on. That's something we're doing to recommend to you how this, these subject matters could be addressed. And that's, if your decision is to agree with us, then you may or may not assign them to other bodies. But we have what we believe is a relatively comprehensive list of items that need to be addressed and have suggested where some of those might be addressed by what body, BPW's in there repeatedly. And the Marin City Council, you all may decide to agree with that or send them on or not send them on. But that's not our, that's not what we're proposing. We're proposing a list of things that we think are needing attention. And there are, most of those, now, two thirds of them are planning commission matters, one third lie outside the planning commission.
Right, and what I'm saying to you is by doing that, if what you're taking, this list, you're basically saying that these are things that need, that, that, if the city council says that it agrees with this whole list, then you're putting the onus on city council to go and do something about it with other, you know, with other commissions, with other, with the state. Just look at this with property owners, with the board, with mitigation team. And I just, I don't think that's a good idea. I don't, I don't, I think, I worry that this is going to, because, you know, I'm going to have to bring it up. It is going to go before council, and council is going to say, well, wait a minute, we're going to have to go through these one at a time. And I don't think that's what you want. I, my understanding of what you wanted to do was to prioritize the work of the commission, this commission, by looking at all these things that, these many, many issues that have come before you over time, and say to the city council, this is what we think is most important, do you agree? Getting into the, the next tier, which is, we've seen other things that we think other groups within the city should take care of. Council, do you agree? I think that's a horse of a different color.
Well, I, I think a lot of this, not a lot of this, many items came from the comp plan. And we received, after the first comp plan, we received a lot of criticism for not accomplishing the things in the comp plan. So when assigned this, I wanted to go through the comp plan and kind of see things in there that normally aren't part of our purview and get them out there. Because I, the other part of it is, under these headings, it takes all of these pieces to comprehensively tackle a subject. And we don't, we don't do a lot of it, or we haven't been working with this group, or we haven't been working with BPW specifically on this, but now we will. And so I, some of these items, like that one in particular, comes from the comp plan, I believe. So that's why some are not generally us, and we don't mean them, at least, I don't believe we meant them as assignments, but we meant them as making the subject complete. Like, if we're going to talk about connectivity and gateways, then we've got to put these other things in here. And it's not specifically us, it's planning, but others will ultimately make a decision, like, is a TID a good idea or not? I don't know. So that...
I mean, we seem to be spending an inordinate amount of time dancing around what's, what seems to be semantics. Bonnie, would it satisfy you just to take those items that are outside the purview planning commission and strike the ranking and leave them at the bottom of the list?
What I had suggested is that you might want to alter the way the list is written to say, what is a planning commission priority? And what are things of interest to the planning council?
I think we just said the same thing.
I think we did too.
So...
That's what I suggested before, Tom.
I, I know, but we seem to be spending a lot of time discussing the same thing.
So I think a lot of, all the items are, have a planning, holistic as a planning topic. And this list currently on the screen is all the items, even though some of them have unknown, they'll probably end up at the planning commission somehow, is a list of all the items that are, will fall under the jurisdiction of the planning commission. All, all I did was take out of the list that was on the website, broken down that, that these are the planning commission or a current subcommittee that is currently working on them. If this is the list you'd like to send to the council, we can do that.
I'm another, I, I don't know, I'm, I struggled with this when we looked at this last meeting, and I'm still struggling with it. And maybe it's just that I'm trying to jump into the next level of analysis. The question I have has to do with the line items under any one of these gray headings, like floodplain or stormwater management. When you, when you specify them as a particular line item, are they mutually exclusive from the others? Because it seems, I, I have trouble separating a number of these lines from each other in terms of what they, what we ultimately need to examine in order to fulfill that line item. A bunch of them in my mind are related at some level.
Right, oh yeah, for sure. Yeah, no, these were just topics that were given, a lot of these actually came from the mitigation reports that were done, and we just took them line by line. Now, when you start working on them, actually, several of these probably will be combined into one project. But the way they were submitted, I, I just grouped them under, like, the floodplain heading or the sea level rise heading. Doesn't mean that they won't end up being, being worked on together, because actually, a lot of the items under sea level rise are all one, being done at the same time.
So, so I'm just wondering, how much, how much, how much less daunting might this be if we went one more step and tried to remove the different sources of how they ended up in this column, the, the lines? You know, just to sort of simplify this list, accounting for the differences that councilperson Oslers has been asking us to do.
So I know where you're coming from, but I think what we can do is, if you just want to focus on the items that are responsibility of the planning commission, because you might be able to work on a couple of floodplain items, but they could also end up trickling down into other subcommittees or other categories that you might not see right now. You might actually start working on one of the topics and realize, oh, I can bring this topic into it, and you won't know at this time.
That, that's what, that's why I ask. I mean, I think there's a lot of overlap between the work that will go on to answer any of these items.
Right, and I think you won't find some of those connections until you actually get into the work.
Right.
So I think if you, if you leave them, like, the, the bigger picture, and then, because sometimes I think you'll, you'll just find, you're working on something and realize you can bring something else in. So I think if you, if you leave it like that, I think it gives you a little bit more flexibility instead of losing something, potentially.
So Bonnie, I mean, I mean, it seems to me that we need, we're always going to find places where we run up against the edge of our purview, but because of our charge, we're, we still have a need to, you know, to protect a given resource or a particular issue. It seems like we should be compiling that list of, of items where crossover is necessary, where we, we, we have better coordination between us and any number of other committees and or just city council. It seems to me we should be generating that list. It seems to me we should be generating that list. Wouldn't a matrix of some sort help you?
I don't have any, as I said before, I don't have any problem with you keeping that, those items somehow. What I do think is confusing is, to go back to this again, is this is a list that is being sent forward by the planning commission to the council for the council's blessing. And when you, when the planning commission goes beyond its purview and says, this is a priority for us. So council, you agree with us and implicitly tell the other commission, whatever it may be, to go do something. I, I think that's a problem. And, you know, the, the other thing that is, strikes me as missing here a little bit when we talk about what's in the comp plan is, under each, as we all know, under each of the topics in the comp plan, there are specific recommendations already, already stated in the comp plan itself. So I'm a little, I mean, I, I know Kay is thorough and I know she did a great job. I'm a little concerned about the fact that there's no, that, that the fact there already are recommendations out there about how to tackle a particular problem in the comp plan aren't crosswalked somehow. But, you know, you, you all can do what you want. I'm just saying that I, I think, I think it gets muddy when you talk about this, these being planning commission priorities and they're beyond what you all can, can actually affect.
But some of the, many of the recommendations in the comp plan don't have meat on the bones. I mean, they're high level, they're not implementation strategies.
Of course.
So, I mean, the, the whole purpose of this is to get those high level down to something that we can actually start to implement.
I understand that. But when that means that the planning commission is telling somebody else to go do that, that is a problem. I'm not saying you lose the content, I'm saying that you recast it.
So I, I have a couple of specific questions, if I can. I'm a little unclear under, on page one, there's a line that says incentivize city stormwater utility. What was the intent behind that?
That actually came out of several of the mitigation and flooding reports as something that to, to look at for some type of incentives for that topic. Didn't have any explanations under it. It was just, maybe we should look at incentivizing it. And again, that's something that would not fall under the purview of the planning commission. That, that is a city and a BPW item.
Yeah, I'm not sure that we ever had an action like that. I'm not sure what to do with it. I mean, I don't know, what we're incentivizing.
Well, and let me, let me be clear. I mean, we were a, a subcommittee of everybody coming at this from all different angles. And not everybody is 100% behind every one of these. But everybody recognizes, I think on the subcommittee, it's like the value of each item. So that's part of it. And also, there's no reason that, sort of saying, you know, review the idea of a TID and the answer might be not appropriate for us at this time. Next, you know, we're not saying it has to happen, it has to be in place. So the answer being no is certainly a very real possibility. But as long as it's talked about, everybody's kind of brought up to speed on it again and thought about it and it's like, nope, and then move on, that-
No, okay, I didn't know criticism on it. I'm just, you know, on my BPW hat, I was trying to figure out what, what I was going to do with this because I'm not sure really what we're trying to incentivize. That, that's the only point there.
And if the answer is not appropriate at this time, then that's a completely legitimate answer.
Well, I mean, I'm wondering if this is, you know, without going into any more details, I don't want to label, you know, whether this is MS4, whether this is about quality, whether it's about quantity, you know, what those are. But we don't have to go into that now. That's not-
And again, that was never the intent was to get into the detail. It was a holistic concept and that's all these were, were to be a big picture concept. And things to, again, that were coming out of reports, coming out of plans that had been submitted to, to the city. And it also included some things that came out of, you know, discussions that were had at different meetings. Yeah.
There had to be discuss, some discussion relative to the task to determine difficulty and timeframe. So-
You want to add a comment, Sumner?
Yeah, I mean, having not been a part of the dialogue and you guys have done an incredible job of trying to tackle all the things that are in that list, I mean, even just to compile them. I'm wondering how much of some of the confusion would be helped by putting the source for a given line item. And it sounds like, from what Janelle said, you were compiling sort of lists of recommendations from a variety of sources, including the comp plan, including the Quinn report, including hazard mitigation plans, whatever. It might provide some context for the particular line item. Otherwise, it seems to me that there, it just feels to me like there needs to be some level of trying to rectify the different ways that these different sources describe these items. It might help make this a better list.
I, I think that's an excellent idea, Sumner. I think that, I think that would help the, who's ever going to be working on them to understand where, you know, with the intent behind it was.
I'm going to make a suggestion, though, to see if we can come to some general agreement, particularly given our councilperson's concerns. I don't know that in going forward to the Marin City Council, Sumner, we need to have that finite breakdown as to the source of where the issue came from. Stepping back for just a second. We started with a comp plan review, which, which has gone through a couple of iterations, successful and unsuccessful in various ways, as a broad look at what issues are open in the city, what concerns have been expressed during and after the comp plan process. So going forward to Marin City Council, it seems to me, we can accentuate and differentiate, or to use another word, bifurcate between exclusively immediate Lewis Planning Commission action items and other items that may not be exclusively Lewis Planning Commission, but may be in other doorsteps. Those other items really are up to Marin City Council to decide what to do with them. If that is a BPW Marin City Council issue, if it's a Board of Adjustment issue, Marin City Council has to decide whether they want to refer it or raise it or not. So to move us ahead, I think we need to give us a list that is simply the planning commission's list of priorities for itself. Secondarily, a list without ranking of high, lower, medium, without a list that in any way prejudges how the Marin City Council may decide. These are other areas based on our general review of the comp plan, historically and currently. These are open items we think need to be addressed. And leave it to Marin City Council, the city manager and others to decide what to do with them in the short term. We have enough on our plate under those that are just Lewis Planning Commission issues that will be busy for a long time. And we have to deal with some of those priorities, in my mind, sooner than later, rather than getting bogged down in whether we have to consult with the, the Board of Adjustment or anybody else on what variances they're dealing with and whether they're appropriate. So I would suggest we prepare two lists, slightly different. Let it go to Marin City Council. Get Marin City Council to agree that these are issues that should be addressed. They can agree in detail or not with the rankings on the planning commission's behalf. They can, they can then do as they wish with those that are not exclusively within the planning commission's purview. And we have raised to the level of the defining authority in the city all of the issues that we think are important to be dealt with in the near term or not so near term. And it's up to Marin City Council then, and the city manager and others, to decide those other issues if they need further attention by anybody else. When we go to Marin City Council, I suggest that it is the Chair of the Subcommittee on the Action Plan, Kay and Janelle, who make the presentation, given the background. We started from this very wide perspective. We've tried to get very specific and collect suggestions and concerns that have been raised over time. This is not just a current, recent raising. Some of these go back a few years. And this is what we think we need to be addressing for the benefit of the city. And it's up to Marin City Council to decide to bless that or otherwise approve it and go forward. We then would have to come back in short order, hopefully in February, as the city manager and I talked about today, to look at the budget impact and try and get ahead of the curve, councilperson Osler. So we're in the beginning of the budget process, not interrupting it or amending it after the fact, but try to get in as early as possible. Pick those few targets that we want to deal with in short order and move forward. There is more here than anybody collectively can handle. I, I want to make it manageable. I want to make it successful. And remember, the, one of the aspects later this year, that later next year, rather, that we want to look at is indeed the comp plan. And a lot of things that are in there that are specific or aspirational, do we need to change any of those going forward? What's our work done on flooding and other issues that might make a change in the comp plan? So I suggest we try and make this as manageable as possible, get as much specific support from Marin City Council as we can, and then come back to them if other things that we find are related to other organizations and renew our concern that others have to contribute or address some of these issues separately or with the planning commission. Yay, nay? Anybody have any amendments, thoughts about that?
I do. I think you summed it up very well. And I think getting the list done and marking those other items at the bottom somehow. But I feel like when I was on this action plan subcommittee and reading the background report, we were tasked to do this for the entire city. So I'm glad that you made that clear. But I do think that, given the amount of work and effort that we've put into it, it would be fairly simple from this point forward to get that done.
So I guess one question I would have for the councilperson is, you know, having, is council going to be happy with the list without having references to what the items came from or more details on it? Because council has a habit of, or, you know, they, they do deep dives on this stuff. And I'm not sure that these line items aren't just going to elicit longer discussions.
That was why I raised the question a few minutes ago. I, I, I don't want to encumber the council with something that's going to start a huge, but wait a minute, what about this kind of a process? I mean, unless that's what we want.
You want to have council say, wait a minute, what about this? No, you don't.
I, I, I hope not. I hope that we would be generating a list that would be so clear that you could, you could say yay or nay or whatever, rather than say, wait a minute, what did they mean? We think we, they meant this, but not that.
It, it, well, first of all, in answer to Tom's question, it's not a question I can answer. I, I can't speak for the other four members of council. I don't know whether they'd want more information or not. I mean, I think if, if Janelle and Kay are there and they can say, you know, well, the genesis, if somebody does have a specific question, they can say the genesis of that was, whatever. But if you, picking up on what Drew suggested, and, and I think what I was suggesting is if you look at, for example, the first page, right, the three high priorities that the planning commission has set, basically for itself, all of this stuff, there, there's not going to be a big question about where evaluate infrastructure vulnerability or evaluate drainage basin came from, right? I mean, people are going to say, yes, that's, that's self-evident as a, as a subset of water issues. So I guess, Sumner, I, I don't know that people have things. I think if you, if, if what's presented is the planning commission is concerned that it wants to make this its priority, I, I have a feeling that the topics are going to be such that no one's going to say, what's the basis for that? You know, something like, provide community workshops under education, that, that's a little more general. So, you know, I, I think, I think if you just rejig the list a little bit, it, it will solve a lot of these problems.
And can I suggest that if there are specific questions from the mayor or city council members, we should encourage them to raise them before the meeting in January, hopefully where this is considered. And make available Janelle and Kay or others to give more background information on any specific item that somebody's interested in.
Yeah, and I'd be happy to send that out.
Early.
Early and say, you know, that here, this is, this is what this is. This is where it came from. This is, you know, what, what you're going to have before you. If, if you, it would facilitate the process. If you have questions, you know, in, obviously not ever violating FOIA, but if you have questions to follow up. I think that's a very good idea. And I, I'd be happy to, to, to send that out.
Thank you.
Sure.
And then the, the, the second item, I just want to circle back around to economy to begin with. I think the list would benefit by an additional column of risk benefit to the city. And I recognize it's going to be subjective, but so are the rankings subjective. And it helps to explain which items, even for our own sake, we're going to work on going forward. I mean, some of these are, you know, like changing the slope of the, the pipe, the stormwater drains. It's a nicety, we handle it right now. It's not a high benefit, so on. Other ones, like addressing some of the sea level rise stuff or floodplain. So I, I just throw that out there one more time.
Tom, since you're making a suggestion, which you're predicating on an engineering background, are you volunteering to participate in that?
Drew, when have I ever said no?
Thank you. I mean, seriously, I mean, there are all kinds of risk assessments that many of us have participated in. But this is, as you described, an engineering one. And maybe you and Charlie, with Janelle and Kay or the rest of the subcommittee could come up with some additional information. I don't want to delay this, however, for a month or two to come up with a risk assessment. That would be counterproductive, in my mind.
That's not my-
I think that might actually be something that, once this goes through council, that then the commission could take a look at as prioritizing which ones you want to hit, tackle first. So I think if you're just trying to get this list to council to make sure that, hey, we're both, we're all on the same page of, these are priorities that we're working on and we want to make sure we're, we're not going in two different directions, then when it comes back to the commission, that you can take some time, or the subcommittee can take some time and, and go, okay, how do we weight these items based on risk?
Because I'd also like to get Glenn's review of some of these as well before tackling them. Can, say, consider rezoning by floodplain. That would need a lot of guidance before even starting that. It would need a lot of framework of thought from, from Glenn, from, from Charlie, from FEMA. I, I don't even know. It, it's going to take quite a bit. And, and, I mean, the risk, is it the risk of doing it or the risk of not doing it? I mean, on some of these, I couldn't even give you a risk. I don't know. If it's too risky, we're not going to do it.
If someone is sending you the native file, I will take the first cut at it and send it back to you, Kay.
Okay, thank you.
Bob, did you have a comment you were trying to make?
You're on mute?
We can't hear you, Bob. We're still not able to hear you, Bob. I'm not sure why. Janelle, can you see, is he on mute?
Didn't look like it.
Doesn't show up on the screen.
Yeah, no, he's, he's good. So it might be on his end.
Yeah, sometimes you have to close out and get back in.
You can always type it into the chat and we can read it that way if the audio is causing control concerns.
To your point, Drew, I have no intentions of trying to delay this.
Has anyone noticed?
But I just don't want us to get too much in the weeds before we get-
No.
Blessings.
Because I, I would have rather had this a month ago, rather than-
I just don't want this to go to council and then have it come back with-
Well, I get it. I just would have rather had it a month ago. Because I, I, I mean, a lot of my life is in a box right now. So it, this is sort of adding degree of difficulty at the last moment.
And again, I think the risk can be done once it comes back from council because I think you're just trying to get ideas and prioritization to council to make sure as, as it was understanding is, we are on the same page of what is priority for both council and the commission. Because if council doesn't believe something's a high priority that the commission does, the commission needs to know that. So they need to know what to work on for, for projects for the upcoming year. With recognizing, all of these items will not be- all of these items will not be done in the next year or two, because there's like, there's like ninety items on the, on the list. So it, it was just kind of taking a stab at what do we want to work on, making sure we're in, in, in keeping with what council is, is thinks is their priorities, so we're both going the same direction. So I think some of the risk analysis can be done, once the list comes back from council, going, okay, this is what they believe are the, are their priorities for, for the list, and I can provide a list of just the planning commission items. And if you want to send to council a list of all the items without a ranking, we could do that as well. That's, that I think is, is very, actually very simple to do.
Well, let's send the list to Tom, I think we should move ahead of Tom, and you all can agree subsequently to the analysis that he's suggesting. Maybe we can supplement what we submitted, but I think we simplify the list by bifurcating it, as we've talked about, by having you and Kay present to the council the, the perspective of where this comes from, what it consists of, and the other items, and then we will be back to council for support, funding or whatever, in the not-too-distant future to support some of these items.
Tom, I promise you, if I, if I have the list tomorrow morning, I will turn it around, have it back to you, Kay, tomorrow night.
Okay, thank you.
Sorry.
Yeah, there, there are, there are, aside from holidays, there are some employment issues that are interfering with everybody's availability at the moment. Aside from COVID and holidays and stuff, so we have to be mindful of the fact that not everybody has free days and free nights.
Thank you.
All right.
Along with COVID.
Is there an objection, is there an objection to proceeding generally along the lines we've been discussing about two lists going forward? And that the councilperson, our ex-official member, will circulate, solicit early comments or questions to come forward to Janelle or Kay. If Tom, if they agree with your risk analysis and able to get it out, we'll add that to it. Is there objection to proceeding along that line? I hear none, Glenn, I don't think we need to vote on this. We can concede without objection unless you have another opinion. All right, let's move on then to the reports, under paragraph D on the agenda. Action plan, is there anything else you wanted to bring up?
Heck no, thank you.
You brought up everything already, so what is there left?
Dear God, no, thank you.
Sumner? You're muted.
I have secured at least two members, and I'm always willing to entertain any others. Melanie and Nancy have agreed to work with me to get this going. I think right now we're looking at an early January first meeting.
And, and you can tell me later what it costs you to buy their services, but we'll go on.
Go for nothing.
Melanie, welcome, sorry you missed us earlier, we, we hope everything's okay.
Everything's fine, thank you.
Okay, anything else on the floodplain?
No, not at this time.
Thank you. Tom, Panetta, again, thank you and congratulations on a very successful water workshop.
You'll have to add, I've gotten comments back on the draft ordinance from Mike Powell and Denrek. And Jessica's promised comments back this week. And those are the two main groups that really have input on the ordinances. And we'll be circulating that to, we're, we're trying to set up our next sea level meeting, the beginning, the beginning of the new year. And we'll look at their comments and incorporate them.
Great. Wetland Buffer?
We're at that point where, realistically speaking, in January, we'll work with Janelle and Anne-Marie to get experts to go over it, but we're at that intersection of volunteer, and then this is where the city needs to actually kind of step in and help us with that, so we are working on, on that. I, I think January is when that will really realistically happen. And then the other thing, yes, there you go.
Got a date for that one, the others are still working on their dates.
Perfect. And then the members of the Wetland Buffer Subcommittee are going to be working on the Source Water Protection Overlay. We're meeting on the sixth of January at five thirty via Zoom to talk about this. And I'm thinking from what we heard this evening regarding floodplain, perhaps we need to factor in circling this past FEMA when the time comes in the process.
You also, because of what I said earlier, and Anne-Marie was gracious enough to work on this for us, that we might be able to get Denrek involved earlier in the process if we need to, which could be helpful and won't cost the city any budgetary constraints.
Excellent.
Effort, so we keep that in mind as we go forward, all right.
Wait, Tom, what time was I meeting on the sixth?
Five thirty?
Five thirty by Zoom on the fourth.
Glenn, as city solicitor, do you have any?
We'll get it figured out.
Just, just mention that Monday, city council had two or three East Savannah before the, the corner of Savannah and Cape Horn Open Drive. The, they held their public hearing already, they could have taken action, they decided to defer on action. This is the question about changing the zone from commercial or from residential back to commercial zoning. They decided to defer while they waited on the comp plan amendment to catch up with the change in zones, they can take action contemporaneously. So they're, but they're positioned to do that now, just because you all have done some work on it, I wanted you to know where it sits. And that's all.
Update.
Yeah, we also, we also set a hearing date on Dutchman's Harvest.
That's right.
Do you have any other updates or issues for us, councilperson Osler?
No, that's, that's really it, I mean, I, I guess maybe the only other thing I'll mention, and it's, it's more for your awareness than anything else, is we had a presentation about the, the, you know, the lease to Quest to have a presence over Roosevelt Inlet. And that was, the, the decision was to go forward with, with renewing a lease, so that, that will continue. I mean, again, that's not really directly an issue of yours, but it is a, a structure down on the beach, so I passed that along.
Thank you. Anne-Marie, do you have any updates for us?
So a, a couple of things, I, I put in the chat that the Beach Parking Committee is meeting at six o'clock on the fourth. So I don't know if you can move the, the meeting up a little earlier?
Their meeting is the sixth.
We'll move it to the sixth.
Okay, and, but there's a public hearing at six, so you would only have an hour.
We'd actually only have.
All right, we'll let them work off.
We'll figure it out.
What's that?
We'll figure it out.
Okay, I just wanted to, to make you aware of that. I pulled up the public meeting calendar as, as you were talking dates and wanted to, to make sure we avoid conflicts. I also just want to remind everybody that you, you have city email addresses for city-related business, please use that if you are using your personal email and we get FOIA requests or litigation, your, your personal email is then subject to search. So we just, you know, that's why we established the, the email account, so I just wanted to remind everybody. That's all I got.
Thank you, Anne-Marie. Any other commissioner have an announcement, our liaison, Joe, do you have anything?
No, H Park canceled for December, we have yet to see whether we have any items on for January, we'll let you know.
Thank you, anybody else, any other commissioner? Bob, you haven't had a chance to talk, you want to give us anything? We still can't hear you.
Says machine.
Sorry, Bob, I don't know what the problem is. All right, if there are no other announcements, can we move on to the minutes? We have two minutes, we have the, the November eighteenth public hearing minutes on Dutchman's Harvest. Are there any corrections, changes, or additions to those three pages? Hearing none, do I see, do I have a motion to approve those minutes?
So moved.
Go move, second? Melanie, seconds, all in favor, say aye or raise your hand. Any opposed, abstaining, unanimously passed, then we have the regular meeting minutes for November eighteenth. Are there any additions, corrections, or changes to those? Seeing none, hearing none, is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Go moves. John, seconds, all in favor, say aye or raise your hand. Unanimous, anybody opposed or abstaining, approved. All right, I think that completes our agenda tonight, thank you all very much for your efforts, I wish you all a very happy holiday season, wherever you may be, in snow or otherwise, and we'll look forward to seeing you in the new year. Thank you all for your tremendous contributions this year, the city is much better off because of everything you guys have done. And it really is reflected in the reputation that the water workshop and other events that we engage in receive the response and respect. You guys are really doing a phenomenal job, thank you all very much, happy holidays.
Thank you.
Get your shots.